The meeting in order. Karen, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Batty?
Here.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Keen?
Here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
And Chair Gerard?
Here. We ask if you can, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. It looks like the flag is behind Donovan there. Feel free to turn your video off. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. Under God, indivisible, justiciable. All right, our next order of business is to approve the agenda. I have a motion.
I have a... Can I... Paul, can I express a concern? I don't see Mr. Lambert here yet for our first regular agenda item. So perhaps the agenda should be amended to begin with the discussion with the draft zoning text?
All right, so make zoning text six, and then make Timber Ridge seven. Do I have a motion to approve? Susan?
Prove the agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
Second by Dennis?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard?
Aye. Which brings us to our number six. Number five, I'm sorry. Approved the planning commission meeting minutes from March 10th, 2021. I have a motion.
Motion to approve minutes.
Justin, you motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mike. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard?
Aye. Next up, it'll be a draft zoning code use standards for contractor operations. This is a discussion only item. So I assume Donovan will be kicking us off and then be looking for our valuable input.
That indeed is correct on both accounts. Chair, members of the planning commission, I'd like to refer you to the second item in your packet regarding... This is a continuation of a conversation we had last meeting where in looking at what uses could be accommodated within industrial zoned areas, I question whether the staff and planning commission should explore the contractor operations as a potential use. And so what you have before is some use standards that, to me, reflect what, you know, minimizing the impacts on neighboring properties, producing some standard for the type of businesses that have minimal need for indoor space, though I think some should be required as part of this. And then a lot of space for storage of materials and equipment, often in yards. Yards, of course, should be screened, and this, it should be remembered that these standards are in addition to minimum design standards for buildings, for screening of materials of outdoor storage in general. So this is not meant to, you know, this isn't the only thing that would apply to to these type of businesses. And I'd like to share with you the the few use standards that I pulled together, which are rather simple, involve having a minimum of two acres in size for a lot, that the contractor operations must include a principal structure of at least 8,000 square feet in size in the parcel, and the property must be at least 250 feet from a state or federal highway. In this case, probably the federal highway... I'm sorry, the federal highway is probably not that applicable, but the intent there in the last one is to still preserve those frontages for more intensive uses, ones that really require that public visibility, and ones that, you know, we probably want to have more of as a showcase location. And contractor operations are really, in many ways, you know, they're there to, you know, for the business to operate out of. Oftentimes, there's not a lot of work that actually occurs at these places, though, you know, obviously, there couldn't be some, you know, ancillary office and and perhaps even retail, some limited retail uses with addition to that. So I'd like to, without further ado, you know, pass, open it up to planning commission discussion on what are you envisioning for these? I mean, do you get a sense of what I'm talking about? And do you still support this as a concept for these industrial areas?
You know, since this is just a discussion item, I welcome people just to jump in instead of having to have me call on you. Just be polite and let the person who's currently speaking speak, and then speak after the answer. And we'll just try to get a little more free flowing. It gets a little stuck on loneliness, just wait. So just talk amongst ourselves, and whoever would like to start, please start.
Donovan, I had a whole list of things on here, and I left my list at work, but I remember most of them. Is two acres going to be enough, once you've got an 8,000-foot structure and you've got screening? I'm assuming that they are not going to be allowed to have the entire site be impervious surface?
Right. It's the, I believe, it's pretty much, you know, this is still within these industrial areas, and 80% is the general. I think that's the level for both the I and B3 zoning districts.
I have some concerns about the size, whether two acres is enough, and I appreciate the thoughts of others. On this part of the code, do you want to have things like lighting, hours of operation, entrances and exits in terms of being able to get off the property without destroying traffic? Do we have a noise issue? Most contractors that I know are also doing a lot of snow plowing, and there ain't nothing like at 3:00 in the morning as they're getting ready to go snowplow a parking lot. Hey, Chairman, you said be a little bit informal.
Absolutely. I was laughing.
So those are some of the things to start with, and I'd appreciate the thoughts of the group.
I was... I'm somewhat, I'm going to overlap here. But I was wondering about this impervious surface. Is that covered in another part of the code, Donovan, for entities like this? And would there be a limitation of the amount of impervious surface?
Yeah, it's 80% in the underlying zoning code standards. And that usually, they usually, if you're doing impervious for, you know, 80%, you're going to need a, you know, good percentage of the land for the stormwater ponding. And of course, you know, they have setbacks, and you have, of course, the screening, as Susan mentioned. And that's, just to be clarified, that was, I'm looking for, you know, operations, a minimum of two acres. So that's not anyway a maximum, you know, but it's, but it's so that, you know, it's kind of, we have, you know, I'd like to see just larger operations, you know, a few larger operations located, you know, in Forest Lake.
Couple of excavators, two or three lowboys, a D9, bunch of contractor pickup trucks, and storage of wire and pipe. Two acres goes by real fast.
There's the guys on Highway 8 there over by the lumberyard, McCarron's, and they're packed in there. He does horizontal boring, I believe, is his main business. And he is, come winter, you can't move in that parking lot. It's full up. So to Dennis's point with this impervious, are we looking at, you know, and if a resident needs to have his driveway paved, you know, we don't allow dirt driveways or rock because of dust and whatnot. Are there some along those lines that we can keep it reasonable? I'm not saying every square inch needs to be paved, but, you know, entrances in and out and some of that stuff, I would think we would have a requirement along those lines also.
Mr. Chair, if it's not mostly paved, you've got two issues. One, you're going to leak oil, you're going to leak hydraulic fluid, you're going to leak that stuff. And if it's not paved, or a hard surface, or a packed Class 5, you're going to leach that stuff down. And the second thing is, if it's not paved in the spring when it's muddy and they drive off-site, they're going to drag all that dirt right onto the neighbor's road.
Well, there is something of a, you know, when we deal with these large parking areas, Ryan, the city engineer and I, in discussion, and this is actually with Interstate, with their parking lot expansion that planning commission approved last August, we have, you know, internally have said trap rock would be acceptable, you know, for that type of service, surface. And that is one that does get crushed. And, you know, we've got a little pushback on that, saying that, you know, the turning movements of the wheels can kind of cause that to, you know, dislodge those rocks, but, you know, that, you know, I think we both feel strongly that can be a more, a lower expensive option to paving when you're talking really large areas. And Susan, do you think that that would, that would work?
As long as you're not on the site where that trap rock vanishes every spring. I mean, I've got some in an area on my place, and it has to be added to just about every year, because the more you drive on it, you know, it sinks down, it goes away. So, you know, as long as it's on a fully compacted pad, yeah, trap rock can be really great. But again, there needs to be a standard so that when that trap rock vanishes, they're not pulling dirt out into either a neighborhood or a business district, or, you know, wherever else they are.
I back up for a second. Are we looking to encompass all the use standards for contractor operations in this list? Or is this something that can be general and then be directed somewhere else within the code, or does it all have to be listed here? Because we're kind of getting into the real nitty gritty, just one of them. That's right.
And that's what I asked first. How detailed are we supposed to be in this section?
Well, we, you know, I think we can be as detailed as we want to be in this discussion. And, you know, then kind of go back and do some cleanup to make sure we don't have overlap with underlying standards, you know, that relate to impervious, or, you know, talk more about the things that might contradict other standards. Like, it's pretty clear that the regular, you know, parking areas for commercial areas need to be, you know, hard-packed, dustless, I mean, by two minutes, concrete, and so this is a little bit of departure. But given the, kind of the size of the, these yards, that seems like a a reasonable compromise. But, so Justin, you know, within the zoning code, there's a whole, there's a collection of use standards. Could be anything from drive-throughs to trash enclosures. So this is meant to be kind of what is particular to contractor operations. And, you know, how to permit them and, you know, create decently, you know, good development. Decent, you know, good development, somewhat affordable, given, you know, the economics of these kind of businesses, as well as trying to minimize any sort of negative impacts. Like, if they were, you know, making sure, I think that having some paving within maybe, say, 100 feet of the roadway, you know, the public road, you know, is needed in order to make sure that you're not tracking that sediment onto the then, you know, so that we, you know, take care of those kind of impacts.
You know, at the end of your definition, where it says improvement of structures and improved property, I stumbled over that a little bit. I wasn't quite sure what you meant by that. I'm thinking that this is a yard for owners of who have trucks and trailers and stuff to store outside. So I would work that wordage at the very end a little bit. I thought it was a little, little tough for me to understand, but consider it be not too bright.
In other words, Donovan, a contractor could also be somebody who does land clearing. And so he would be clearing, and it wouldn't be improved. So maybe it doesn't need to, just delete the word improved. Would that, Chairman, would that help?
Yeah, just, you know, yeah, just structures, property, grounds, whatever. Just to make it clear that, to me, a little clearer. We're looking for... Go ahead, Dennis.
It's kind of the Department of Redundancy Department there a little bit, you know.
Donovan will wordsmith it.
Yeah. Can, I just, one other quick comment here. Is there... What is the 250 feet from state and federal highway? What are we, are we saying they won't be? We won't, there won't be any of these that are on Highway 8 or Highway 97?
Yeah, my intention is, yeah, I was thinking Highway 97, in some ways, you know, that, you know, that may not be, because a lot of that is becoming highway business with the updated zoning map. So that's may not be so particular. But the idea is that, I guess I'm not, I don't want to have, you know, go through the permitting battle of requiring the kind of landscaping for really full screening along a highway. And I don't want, you know, that to be, you know, in some ways, it's kind of like Forest Lake's front room, you know, your front parlor. And I, I think contractor yards are important, you know, job, employment centers. But I'm not looking to have them be, you know, in the, kind of the front, you know, the most obvious thing if someone sees when they're driving through Forest Lake.
Donovan, are you saying then that if someone were to put up something on Highway 97, you'd rather see their building up in the front and all their parking and storage and maintenance and repair work done in the back?
Maybe that's how it'd work out. I mean, but no, but the idea is that then, you know, there's another more intensive land use is closer to the highway.
In other words, not having one of Mike's favorite properties right there on Highway 61 without some, you know, screening, that there may be a better use there that would take better advantage of high visibility and high impact in the community.
Thank you, Susan. Well said.
Other comments for Donovan. Donovan, what else are you looking for?
These are good. These are good. And Justin, if you want to, if you have other ideas, you want to, you know, dive into more details, I'm available too, if you want to, you know, meet, you know, offline for that.
Thank you, Donovan.
If you want to send me the, your, you know, the list that you created, that you're, you know, speaking from memory, I welcome that as well.
I do want to make sure we capture the hours, though. And if it's going to be a 24-hour operation, and most contractors are, then how are we going to make sure that noise is mitigated for adjacent properties?
Okay.
Yeah, most construction contractors start, you know, they're on, they want to be on the job by 7:00 or earlier. And if that's the case, then they're going to be leaving their yards earlier than that.
Yeah. And I, you know, I do think we do have a noise ordinance, but it's hard to enforce. And basically, it's meant to be for those construction sites where, you know, the trucks already arrive. So I think you make a good point there, Dennis.
Donovan, you mean the zoning inspector wouldn't be there at 3:00 in the morning when the guys are getting there to go out and do snow plowing?
Well, I'm looking to get one in the 2022 budget, you know, the 24-hour, and drones too.
Any last comments for Donovan? Thank you all for participating. Donovan, you're good to go. So we will move to number seven, which is Timber Ridge 2 Apartments, final PUD, 22552 Everton Avenue. This does have a public hearing, and we're going to consider the application. So with that, I believe we, the way this will work tonight, since it is a public hearing, we will start with the city making their presentation, which will be Donovan. There's the planning commission members then. We'll be open to ask any questions that they may have or clarifications they need. We will then ask the applicant if they'd like to say a few words. And we may have some questions for the applicant, and after that, we will hold a public hearing. I'll give more information at that point, and then we'll close the public hearing, and it'll come back for a decision by the planning commission, and there'll be a, it'll be a recommendation to the city council. This is not ours for final approval, so it's a recommendation we're making. So with that, Donovan, I believe you're kicking us off.
Yes, thank you. Chair, members of the planning commission like to present the final PUD application for Timber Ridge 2 Apartments. You, of course, recall, this is Timber Ridge, located on the west side of Everton, just south of Menards. This did receive primary PUD approval from council. And the plan that's submitted as the final PUD is pretty similar to what to what the planning commission recommended for approval. And I'd like to share the screen to show the project, a couple of the changes. Also, I'll note that following the initial submission, there was another civil set that was sent to me, and I should have included it in the packet, and I'd like to show that now, but for some reason, it's really gumming up my my ability to show a PDF. So I'm going to just work from the planning commission packet. But the changes are minor. They relate more to the buffers, the wetland buffers, and not related to the concerns that the planning commission usually expresses for these kind of projects and, you know, the review that we do. So I'm sharing, trying to share the site plan, which shows the two buildings, as you've seen before, still with a single access onto Everton. I'd like to note that the 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 storage building, which was a concern in some of the, one of the initial meeting, you know, has been brought forward, and this is slow to load. And also nearby, the the storage shed, you know, used for the maintenance equipment, materials for both Timber, proposed to be for Timber Ridge 2, and then also for Timber Ridge 1, located just south of here. And I am just bogging down here. I apologize for that. My screen's frozen. I'm going to stop sharing for a second here and let that catch up. With the, the, there were a couple of concerns from that primary PUD. You know, the one involves landscaping on the north side of the parking areas, both the rear parking and a little bit on that northeast corner parking of the improved site. And, you know, the landscaping plan submitted for this final review does address that. My concern there, there were a couple of concerns with some notations on one of the plan sheets that the city engineer had noted, and I believe that those were addressed in the second one, in the second, this final submission. On March 16th, the Parks, Tres and Lakes Commission did recommend the fee-in lieu of $265,000 for a park, to meet the parkland dedication requirement. I'm going to try again and see if... I am not sure what's going on here. I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Yeah, I think I was. So here we go. I'm seeing the proposed storage building. And what I want to show is how the there is... Gosh. Apologize for this. On the... Apologize for this. What I'm trying to show is a proof of parking over by the back shed, which would push the shed further back. And I believe the applicant showed that proof of parking just in case along Everton, where there is proposed to be a line of trees that meet code with screening, and it's, you know, recommend those be deciduous to provide more shading for the pedestrians walking by on the future trail with that Everton Avenue reconstruction. And since right now in discussions with county's project team staff regarding, you know, the design of that Everton Avenue, currently, those trees are in an area that the county has said they would like to have a, you know, drainage utility easement. So if, in the event that trees aren't allowed there, perhaps parking could be removed toward the rear, and then trees be in the place of those, and then, of course, there'd be the the 10-foot, you know, curb setback as well for the parking. But that's all, you know, that's all future. What is, what is proposed right now does meet the city zoning code for the parking setback, the landscaping, and that sort of thing. There's also an active wetland replacement application for this, and as well as the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Wireshed District, you know, did offer approval both the, for stormwater and variance. I believe that was for the buffer at their last board meeting. And I'm still not getting the, this...
Donovan, would you like me to try to share? I have a PDF up.
If you could, please, because
All right. I'll, I'll try, I'll try taking the bullet for a minute. Let's see if I can do it. No promises, folks.
Thank you.
You like that one? Has everybody got that one?
Oh, I'll chat.
So, so maybe to make, make it simple, Donovan, does that help you enough? That's kind of your landscape.
So that shows, yeah, thank you, Mark. So that shows the, 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 the trees that were concerned that I had from the preliminary plan, if you notice they're, they're black spruce along the rear northern part, parking, northern edge of the rear parking area as well as there's for the, you know, other trees in the northeast area, northeast corner of the parking lot. And with that, I don't, I'm pretty much, you know, this is just not really an update from what we presented as part of the preliminary PUD review. We're still, still, there's still four PUD flexibilities sought that relate to the percentage of one bedroom units, the minimum apartment size required enclosed parking and maximum building height. And the staff recommendation is for approval with, with eight conditions. And these primarily concern the, you know, meeting all the city engineer and fire chief's concerns. Also getting the proper permitting from Comfort Lake Forest Lake watershed district. The, having a wetland fill and replacement plan approved. I'm getting the permitting from Washington County as well as paying the, you know, parkland dedication fee and submitting the required financials. With that, I'm happy, happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Mark, could you stop sharing for now?
Will do.
Thank you. Any, any questions to Donovan? Dennis?
So Donovan, when will we, at what point will we know on this parking and line of trees along Everton there? I mean, is there, do you have any idea? Cause you're talking about, I counted the spaces. I think there's 13 of them there. And it looks to me, I, I, I can, I got this pulled up on another screen here so I can see it, but and it looks like they're just, there's six or seven deep double moving. So what would happen is that that building, the storage building would move back then about six times 10 or, or six times nine, about somewhere between 50 and 60 feet to the northwest. That's where those spaces would go if they're not, if they're not approved by the county.
Yeah. So I'm not certain of their latest, you know, what their design schedule is. They, you know, back in early January, they thought they'd be done by end of February. That has not happened. And I know there's still, I got a request for some, you know, some contact information for some of the business owners. So there's, I know they're still doing design. But that was, you know, but, but seem, you know, whether or not, you know, it's some, I'm not sure how they coordinate, you know, this project coming in exactly what, you know, Mr. Lambert's intended schedule is, but he's willing to tell us what he's, what he's.
They reached out to me last week and we are trying to schedule a meeting. I think my hope obviously would be to get it resolved before we pull a permit. So whether we're, we're going with what you see with the buildings closer in, or whether or not we've got to give up the fight and move those spots out. I'd prefer to keep them if I can. And I think the county could play nice and let us try to landscape in the, in the easement area that we're giving them for free. You know, just, just my, um, so, so I'm, I'm hoping that maybe they'll see, see it my way. I, I usually bet about 40% on those kinds of battles, but you know, I guess, I guess I'm up for the challenge if you're up for letting me play.
Questions to Donovan? Donovan, I have a one for you. In your narrative, under your criteria, number seven, it does not propose phasing of this project. And in the narrative by the applicant, it states it under the architecture, states that there is going to be phasing. Are, are we building the whole thing at once? Or are we doing it in phases?
Can you take that one, Mark?
Sure. The answer is both. We'll start with, I suspect the south building. I believe that's a little closer to the sewer. And then as, as they frame to the roof, they'll jump onto the next building frame to the roof. So, so it's both. But I, we aren't going to do one building, one year, one building the next year. They'll be both sequential.
Thank you. Other questions? Harry Nunn, Mr. Lambert, I believe you're the applicant here. Would you like to add anything?
Just more of a, a comment saying again, thank you for, for the preliminary support. And this is just the cleanup. The wetland fill permit is nearing completion. We had some minor adjustments. It was resubmitted today. We are told that it's been sent off to the members of the TEP and we expect a final determination and approval probably within the week. The Comfort Lake Forest Lake signed off on our plans. One of the tune ups in this set is that instead of having a, a buffer of five feet exactly around the wetland, they asked us to wiggle wobble the sidewalk around Buffalo Butterfly Island and make a few extra covenants. So we did that. This set of plans catches up with that. And then just some minor adjustments, you know, when you, when you do a set of plans and you want to make it sure it's right. That's really what we've done is kind of did the big tune up. So hopefully you'll, you'll see a favor to, to approve it tonight. I think it's a very good set of plans.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant? I have one comment. You changed your garage or your outbuilding, whatever you're calling it there and dressed her up a little bit. My request would be, is there a reason that can't be stoned around the bottom like all of your garages are? I mean, I got all of these other ones. They're beautiful. They're got the stone on the bottom and then I get that elegantly designed pole barn.
True. Actually, I believe the last version we did, and if we didn't, I would be willing to represent or accept a condition that there, there'd be matching stone around the bottom.
Susan?
Do I, Albert, I, I remain adamantly opposed to this project and that's not a surprise to you. But I, I do take my hat off to your marketing people. And, and you discuss the fact that you feel that this is the market. So I've been looking very carefully at planning commissions of other cities from St. Paul to Hugo, Woodbury, Lake Elmo, whatever. I have seen no projects that are coming forward with the kind of very small units and the high percentage of units. And in fact, I'm seeing a lot of three and four bedroom units on those projects. I, I consider 560 or 600 square foot to be neither spacious nor luxurious. But as I said, my, my kudos to your, to your marketing people. I, I am very much not in favor of the serious lack of covered parking, about 50% of what we usually require, especially in Minnesota. Mr. Gerard, you'll remember the number of times that we have had folks coming to us and saying, you can't live in Minnesota without a garage. I have to have a garage. Remember those variances? Yeah, yeah, I know you do. So I, I probably could have, could have dealt with, with somewhat of a higher percentage, 30 or 40, if it had, if it had been some affordable units. But in Forest Lake, we have no transit. We have, that area has no bike lanes. We, they're not complete streets. I, I don't believe that what you're doing is a good fit, but I also understand that I am in the minority and, and so therefore I wish you success.
Yeah. You know, Susan, and again, I think somehow it's a little philosophical, but you know, you've all been very kind. So I'll just share. You know, as you amble along, you, you have a spectrum. The developer puts up whatever the heck he or she wants to do. And, and hopefully they spitball whatever they think the market is. That's one side. And then you have kind of what you have in your, your standard ordinances now, and this is just my editorial. Your standard ordinances say, here's your R3 multifamily, you shall have 10% this, 20% this, 30% this, and 17% that, whatever the numbers are in there. I don't even remember. But, but I look at that and I say, well, well, okay, who's, who's, who's better to make that decision? Is a zoning code that doesn't know the site, doesn't know the location, doesn't know the market, doesn't know what's been built and what's going to be built? Or is it the guy who's going to invest $15 million of his own money to build these buildings? Who should be making the decision as to what's being built? So I've now invested 12 million in Arbor Ridge, 12 million on Timber Ridge. I'm going to, so that's 24 million. I'm going to put another 15 million. And I'm now made a $39 million commitment to your community. And I've asked you to, based on my experience, my current 146 units plus the 106 I'm asking for nearly $40 million. This is what I think the market will do. So, so either a planning commission can demand that I build 30% three bedroom units, which I'm not sure they are. And then in your own preface, you mentioned that people are doing it. So then if I'm trying to help you with the market, am I going to build another 30% on top of that? Or are you going to let me, the guy that's spending $40 million make up his mind? So Susan, bless your heart for trying to make a policy decision, but somehow you've got to stop beating the hell out of your developers who are trying to help you. You know, there is something to say, build a smaller unit and let me try to sell smaller units for a lesser price with less space to people that might need them. And maybe they don't, can't afford a garage. And, and if you make people the garage they don't need, I got an empty garage that I got to pay for and put on the backs of everybody else. So, so all I'm trying to do is find a niche between there. I don't want basements because those are expensive parking spaces. I don't want separate heat packs because I get money and value by giving everybody common heat. And I want outside garages because they're more affordable. So, so some point as you guys debate philosophically, and I probably spoke too much, so don't vote me down. But, 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 you know, give more credence to the market because they should understand. Give credence to guys like me who want to put their money where their mouth is. Ask what they can do. Ask what you can do to help. Debate vigorously. Go beat the hell out of the parking commission. In case you guys didn't hear, I got to give them a quarter million dollars. Why the hell aren't you grabbing 125,000 of that and going putting on low income housing to help somebody and sanitize it rather than me helping build more park benches? So, you know, that's, that's my soapbox. But anyway, you know, bless your heart, Susan. I know what you're trying to do, but, but, but I've found the best things, the best results are when you give the developers the, the credit if they're, if they're worthy of it.
And, and there is a tension. It is up to the planning commission and, and some of us to say, let's make sure that there are places for a beginning teacher and her husband and her kid to live in Forest Lake. We know that they probably can't afford a house, but a one or two bedroom unit, especially in COVID times. And so there is a tension there and I, I absolutely respect it. But I also have great concerns about going the extent of the difference here. And I do want to make sure that I can have some young families and some folks that are starting out, be able to live in a great community like Forest Lake.
Then keep approving us, guys. Keep bringing us back and we'll keep bringing our money back.
Yeah. And I, I would agree with Susan. I think that the number of efficiencies and ones are a higher percentage. I mean, I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't like to see it go above 50%. And part of it has to do as Susan's comment, this, this inclusivity of being able to let so everyone be able to rent in Forest Lake, whether they have kids or whether they're a single person. And it's part of my thought behind, for lack of a better term, through zoning demanding a mix of units. But again, I missed the first meeting on the preliminary. I'm not going to derail the freight train. I think you've done a very nice job on your other projects. So I guess I'll be quiet at this point.
If I can just put a footnote to, I think one of the differences philosophically is you, you guys are approving one project for me tonight. 106 units that, that are heavy on student, studios and one bedrooms. In my mind, I'm completing my 150 or 252 units. So I'm balancing my whole projects. I'm balancing the Arbor Timber one and two mix. So while it looks like I'm loading up for the purposes of this building, studios and ones, in my world of my apartments, I'm, I'm prob, and maybe that's what I should have done in the first place, is brought in my whole mix and show you that it isn't so disproportionate as what this particular phase feels like.
What was the percentage of one bedrooms on the previous two?
Oh.
About 40%.
It was 44, I think, in Timber Ridge one. And Arbor Ridge was pretty similar. I don't have, I do have the number somewhere.
I, I think I've got it.
That's enough. I, I remember and we've had the discussion.
Any other questions to the applicant? Harry Nunn, this is a public hearing. The way this will work, we're going to ask anyone who would wish to comment on this application. Please state your name and address for the record and spend a couple of minutes telling us your thoughts on this project. After we've heard everyone, we will then close the public hearing and we'll go from there. So it's 7:45. We'll open the public hearing. Donovan, is there anyone in person here to comment?
There is no one in city hall here to, to comment.
Karen, is there anyone on the Zoom meeting now who wishes to comment?
I have no one in the chat wishing to comment. And I haven't received any emails. So.
So in the spirit of waiting a few seconds, we'll give it about 30 seconds and we can all admire each other.
About 53 notices to, to the neighboring properties. You know, notifying them of the public hearing for the.
And who would have gotten any response to those? Would that have been you or Karen or they all end up in one depository then?
I think it has Donovan's phone number.
Yeah.
I think when the public was out, it has Donovan's phone number and email address on it. So.
So they all come to one person then, pretty sure.
Yep. Yep.
All right. I'll ask one more time, Donovan. Is there anyone live that would like to speak?
No.
I don't, I do not have anybody.
Okay. Close the public hearing then and bring it back to the commission for a motion or more discussion. Chair is open to either. Dennis?
I make a motion that we recommend the council the approval of this PUD with the condition, it was the, the eight conditions that are listed by Donovan there.
Do I have a second? A second by Mike. I would like to add, if we could, just another condition that the garage gets the same stone trim around it as the rest of the garages or the outbuilding gets sustained. You would allow that change, Mr. Batty?
I would.
Mike, would you second that change?
Yeah, I second that change.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Harry Nunn, Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard?
Aye. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Mr. Lambert, good luck on your project.
You know, I'm an easy target. Send me an email if you want to bring me in for a, a debate some night. I'm certainly happy to do it. Do this. I've done this 30 years, 35 years and, you know, you guys, you know, there's a good cause and a good purpose. It's, it's just back to Sharon's or Susan's point, we, we have tensions, but you know, if we all listen, we can find the way. And, and I'm sure happy to, sure happy to try to help. So if you want, if you want some, some, some free, some free subject to question, I'd, I'd be happy to come anytime you guys want.
Thank you for offering that. We may take you up on it as we are changing our ordinances now. We, we lost Donovan here. So, Mr. Lambert, this is, we just motioned to recommend to the city council. So this will become for the final vote, voted to city council and Karen, that will be on what?
That will be on April 12th.
So April 12th will be the final.
Well, thank you so much.
That's what's going to council.
We wish you all the best on the project.
I appreciate all your help and insight.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, we have moved to our other. And normally I start with Donovan and it looks like I have lost him. And normally I start with Donovan and it looks like I have lost him.
I think we lost him.
Okay, so Karen, do you have any other?
I don't have any other. Commissioner Batty had asked again about. The hybrid meetings or, you know, or when can we go to in-person meetings and what I explained to him earlier and what I can say is that. On Thursday next week. I do have a meeting with Dan and Paul Peterson from L A TV. We've been working on. They've been, Paul's been working on the council chambers. And so we are. Going to do a test run to see how everything works in a kind of a hybrid meeting format. Remote and in person to make sure everything live streams properly and. Hits the monitors correctly in council and a lot of technical stuff. But next Thursday is when we're doing a test on that. So we'll see how it goes. But that's the next big step.
Thank you, Karen.
So what did I miss?
Nothing really.
For us, we're in the other.
Oh, but was there, I didn't, I missed the vote.
It, it passed one, four to one.
Four to one, okay. Thank you.
Did you have anything else for the planning commission tonight?
That is all for the regular agenda items.
We're in the other section. You know, you leave us and we just keep moving on Donovan, so.
My, I lost my connection. I had to come run, you know, come to my office. I know you guys. You know, you got still the dam check school of meeting operations.
More like the Kevin Miller, if you moved it right along.
That's right. Miller movement. Yeah, thanks Karen. Thanks. I caught a little bit of your update. And, and I was getting a little update from Dan today that, you know, if we have, having the number of members, you know, greater than council. And Karen, then pretty much you and I are going to be the spectators, you know, kind of the peanut gallery and, and the, the. Commissioners will basically take up all of the, the full kind of dais as well as the, that, that side staff area, the whole L. Or maybe hockey stick, you know, because we're in Minnesota.
Or are we three foot like the kids are?
Yeah, let's still even, yeah, even with the three foot. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna, you know, swing around the corner there.
There's a space.
People on the commission.
Sorry, I didn't catch that, sir.
What's that called?
In the old days, when we had, when we merged the city into town, we had, I think about 15 people on the commission. You had them in the front and then we had tables on the side and we had a folding tables for some of us. I was in the folding table crowd. I didn't even get the kids table.
Right. We might not have a folding table section because we have to space out, so. I'll be at the folding table section.
Anything else, Donovan?
We'll be spaced out. We do not have an agenda for the first meeting in April. So the April, I believe is 24th. We have some agenda items. The. I had something. The, oh, I did want to give an update. That we had a, you know, that with the, the. With the school district COP sign, you know, amendment from the last meeting. I have an update on that one and that one relates to how, you know, when the school district wanted to. You know, wanted to expand their sign, they just sent me the application. And I said, it needs to come before planning commission because of that, you know, it's significant change. At that time, I, I thought I will, we can amend it to the October 28th COP amendment. So it didn't require an application. They didn't pay an application fee and just, I thought it was kind of an addendum. And, you know, planning commission took a vote on that. And it did not pass. And then when I talked to the city attorney on how we can memorialize that. You know, because it wasn't like there's a, you know, motion of denial. I mean, how do you state the, the reasoning for the record? And he informed me, and this is, you know, all on me, I bear responsibility for this, that actually. And that was not a real application. That was, you know, we, we didn't hold a public hearing. There was notification. So as a COP amendment, it's, it, that was not a true decision. And so that's for, for instance, that's why it's not appearing as an appeal. Before city council, if, if that's what they chose to do. I mean, I told him that. Basically what the city attorney's advice was that if they did, it would basically. He'd recommend the council kind of remand it back to planning commission. And so, you know, right now, the, you know, the, it's almost like that didn't happen. But, you know, is, that is not, you know, the, the sign that, you know, they. You know, I'm not approving the sign they proposed because obviously this takes more than just simply administrative review. And maybe they'll bring forth another sign plan for. The planning commission's consideration, you know, but that will be the formal COP amendment process with the public hearing and notification and. So. Apologize for that and, you know, and maybe, you know, maybe the chair bears a little responsibility because he's kind of new with this, you know. But no, I mean, I really just tried to try to do the flexibility and. And that's, well, I learned a lesson and. So we'll see in the future if they bring something forward and, and we can, we can have that review.
Mike?
Donovan, so. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 24th? We don't have anything in between then or before then?
No.
Second week of April?
No, and actually. No, and.
Yes, April 24th. Sorry, April 28th.
I'm sorry. It's 28th.
Oh, 28th, but nothing, nothing on the second week?
Correct, nothing, right.
And. With the signage, with the, with the school district. So that, that's just kind of on hold right now to see what, 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 what they're going to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a question to Donovan? Moving on, we have councilperson Munson who's been sitting back quietly. Any comments for us? Any concerns? Any words of wisdom for us?
No, the only update that I had Karen shared is that we're getting closer to the hybrid. Way of doing meetings. That's it. No words of wisdom this evening.
Susan?
Council member, many cities give tax breaks to unoccupied. Either business rental units or housing rental units. Does the city of Forest Lake do that?
You asked me about tax breaks. I would have to ask the city staffer, look that up, Susan. I wouldn't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, and, and we also had a. Tax inquiry, a TIF district. And two buildings were to be torn down to meet the requirements of that TIF district. And I noticed that those buildings are being rehabbed. So I was wondering if the council has an update on the status of that particular TIF district on Centennial.
I do not, Donovan, do you?
I can take that one. So due to the debt, the failed deadlines for development on, on that, on, you know, on those two lots. Those were knocked out of the TIF district in 2019. And so when the TIF district was actually kind of formalized. I assume you're referring to the one that's on, you know, just on the west side of Lake Street between Third and Fourth Avenue. So that one, right now, that TIF district is simply the cornerstone plaza development. Those other, those other. Properties are just simply, you know, with, you know, within that commercial zoning district and have no special status as it is being within a TIF district.
Okay. Thank you. And one more council member. There was a somewhat controversial development off of 97. On the golf course. Just curious as to the status of that.
Right now, there is nothing moving. I appear talking about the building of the clubhouse. That is not. It's just on hold right now. That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate.
Any other questions of our councilperson? Thank you. We'll go around Rome as they say, if anyone has anything, and we'll do it by how I see you guys here. So Dennis, you're up first. Anything?
Nope, not tonight.
Susan?
I've done enough damage.
Justin?
Nothing for me.
Mike?
Nothing.
And I have no update, but I appreciate your patience with me this evening as I attempt to get back into saddle. So thank you all very much. Since everybody's been covered, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Justin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike? An unavoidable motion. Karen, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard?
Aye. Thank you all. Have a good week.